Show a decrease due to a couple of the capital leases have been completed. And this again is one of those special little funds where we get on a per capita basis, money from the state, from the motor fuel tax that amounts to about $350,000 a year. And you see on the expenditure side on page 153, page 153, contractual maintenance of the city-owned streetlights, lease payments for equipment rental, $90,000 for electric utilities, and $90,000 for salt and anti-icing. This is another one of these where we're a little bit constrained in terms of what we can do with this money. So we get our money from the state's share of the motor fuel tax and we try and allocate it out of this fund.
Alderman Shockey.
Is, you're saying that it's city-owned streetlights? If somebody, for instance, at Elizabeth Park wanted a streetlight, would it come out of this fund?
I don't know. Put my hand up. I have to say, me. I think I'm sitting next to you. I was intrigued. It's going like this.
This MFT fund, and Brad leaned into my ear and told me that this is for cost of maintaining the lights. I don't believe it includes a spot for the addition of new lights.
Alderman Coles.
This, this particular fund will vary because of price of the gasoline. The price goes up, the motor fuel tax goes up. And if the gas comes down, the price of gas comes down, then the tax comes down. So this, this particular fund will vary in the, on what charges of gas and, so you've got to figure that you can't actually depend on the right amount of tax on this thing. So I know it's a flat tax. It's a flat tax that everybody pays for and everybody gets a cut of. So this is what's called a gas, a tax that'll go up and down just on the price. Okay? And how people use it. It's summertime, they use a little, the gas, the price goes up, the tax comes in. And then one time when people don't buy as much gas, it goes down. So as far as I'm concerned, it's a tax that varies and it looks pretty good to me.
I got a quick question. On the motor and fuel tax, basically this coming from the gasoline stations? Is that strictly from gasoline stations in Wooddale or are we getting a share throughout the state?
We get a share based upon our population. The state collects the state gas tax and they remit it back to us on the basis of population. And there's a standard per capita. As a matter of fact, the newest numbers came out today in the IML magazine and it's down about, they're projecting it's going to be down about a percent next year over what it is this year. And it's distributed just basis on, based upon how many people we have in town.
Because we had that new gas station coming in.
Has no effect.
The way we're getting those numbers.
Won't have any effect. You pay two different kinds of taxes when you gas up. You pay the gas tax and you pay a sales tax on the purchase. The sales tax, we keep entirely, we get a penny of the six cents.
Right.
We get our own one cent. And on top of that, there's a gas tax that you pay the state. And then we get part of that back based on.
And that's where this comes from.
Right. On the population, not on the new gas station. The money there is from the sales tax.
Okay. Alderman Wesley.
I have one question on the snow and ice control account 44083. John, I noticed your budget last year, 110,000. This year you went down to 90. Let me ask you this question. Is it because we didn't use as much salt? And my question is, how will this affect the new product, the new stuff that we put down on the street for the beet juice? Isn't that a little more cost? So why would we say, why would we through 110,000, we knock $10,000 out of snow and ice control? Why would we do that?
The simplest answer is we expect to be more productive with using the anti-icing agents than we did when we were using just bulk, bulk road de-icing salt. So we have a full bin of beet juice blended product right now, which is approximately 5,000 gallons. I would envision that that'll last the city next year, at least into the first two months of the winter time, pre-applying. So that is a cost savings for the city. We've already purchased that. It's already came out of this year's budget. So we'll be carrying that over into next year. I wouldn't imagine we're going to get any more snowstorms this year. Plus we have roughly 250 ton of salt right now on hand. So that all equates to product we can use next year. Plus I expect to be about 15 to 20% leaner on salt next year because of the anti-icing. So in factoring those savings in, we felt very comfortable in reducing that number by $20,000.
Okay. My, I have a follow-up question on that. With the beet juice, do we have to lock in like we have to lock in with the salt price after this year? Do we have to lock in with the beet juice price now at a lower cost? Or if we decide to continue with the beet juice, which I thought was a very good product? Or are they going to give us a price when it comes to winter? Are we locking in a contract now with them, with their price and with the salt company now? Because normally we do that with state purchases.
Normally we'll lock in a contract August, September. That's normally when they start making the, either state contracts available or since we don't use state contracts because of our limited ability to store at least bulk road de-icing salt. When we go through Morton's, we basically request a price for them or we extend our contract that has been in agreement with Morton's and the city predating me by at least 10 years. So we normally advertise, or we go to them in August, September and request to have a price given to us at that point. Anything prior to that, I don't believe that they would grant us. Right now, we're looking at about $60 a ton for salt. That's what we paid this past year. I would envision that to probably stay relatively the same next year. Basically, they've ramped up production after the last three winters have been relatively harsh. So the price is pretty much stabilized. I would envision maybe even possibly a little lower. As far as the blended anti-icing beet juice product, you know, we were spending just around a dollar 70 a gallon delivered. I would envision that price to stay the same next year. We've built a good relationship with our supplier and they've told us that they would expect that price to be relatively the same next year unless transportation costs go up. That would be the only reason.
So we save about $20,000 by going to beet juice this year, roughly?
I'd probably lessen that to about 10 or 15,000. The reason I adjust it by 20, like I says, all the product we have on hand.
That's fine. Thank you.
A quick question on that, on that beet juice. I mean, being that it's mixed, it'll hold its whatever value is that it will work, it doesn't break down or nothing?
It does break down. We have the ability to cycle our tank. And it, basically if we cycle our tank for a couple hours every month, that keeps that product suspended in solution and it'll be just as the day as we purchased it next December when we use it as it would be today.
Okay. Next fund, equipment replacement fund.
Let me explain a little bit about how this fund works now and how we see it working in the future. What we do each year is we determine what we need in terms of equipment replacement. Not new trucks, but replacement vehicles, mostly for public works, police squads, and some additional police equipment. And we move money from the general fund into the equipment replacement fund. And the last few years, we've been doing that straight on a pay-as-you-go basis. However much we need, we move that money in. We're going to start next year on converting that more of a, to more of a sinking fund because we see in the out year, say year five or year six, we're going to have a couple pieces of equipment that are very, very expensive. And if you look at the graph of what it costs us to replace these equipment, it's going to spike in say year five or six. We're going to start to set aside a little bit more than we actually need in years one, two, and three. So when that spike hits, we'll have enough in the bank that we won't have to make a significant increase in the transfer for the general fund. You see this a lot in the case of cities that have their own fire trucks and fire departments because, I mean, you've got some real significant pieces of equipment at 300, 400,000. We've got a few that are less than that, but we see them on the horizon. So next year, you'll probably see this equipment replacement fund funding, getting more infusion of cash from the general fund than we actually need that one year. What we're doing is building up a cushion so when the spike hits, we'll have enough to smooth out. Having said that, again, this is money that goes straight into the equipment replacement fund, from the general fund. So it has an effect. And although the target level on page 166 called for an expenditure of 213,000 and change, Plan B recommends reducing that amount by $75,000 and not replacing two vehicles at public works. So if you go with the Plan B, you can knock out $75,000 in essentially the general fund
Alderman Wesley.
My question is, we have a five-year, if I'm mistaken, we put together a project, a plan on what gets replaced every so many years before we do it. My question, if we start cutting equipment, that's going to show us, set us back a year or two. My opinion on that, we need to stay on course with our equipment replacement program. Because if we keep, if we put it back this year and come next year, we come with a shortfall, we're going to put it off again and again. Then you're throwing the whole cycle out. Well, maybe you can, or John, how many years out are we in the equipment replacement fund? How many years do we put together?
It depends on the lifespan of the vehicle and the cost of the vehicle. And what we've got is a long-term spreadsheet. And all of our vehicles are identified by replacement cost and lifespan. Cop cars are, police squad cars are typically two, maybe three years before we transfer them out. A lot of the large equipment that John has may be on a 10, 15-year life cycle. So we really plug them in at the time we see them as, see them as getting near the end of their useful life. What this will do, and you're right, Alderman Wesley, we've identified these two vehicles that need, as needing to be replaced in 2011. If we move them over to 2012, it's just going to accelerate, we're going to have to pay the piper sooner or later, you know?
So we might have to replace for 2012 then? We may have to, and I don't have the float.
It may be more.
2012 will be maybe three vehicles got to be replaced. And then we might have to go 2013? You got to do five. I strongly suggest that we stay on the capital equipment, I mean, equipment replacement fund the way it's going. Because if we put it off, we're going to go down there. I've been down that road. I mean, I've been on a, somewhere else here and they in the same boat right now that trying to find money to replace equipment. I, vehicles, I think we just need to stay in sequence with our equipment. I just don't think that's a smart move. That's only my opinion.
Alderman Coles.
We've always replaced two squad cars every year since I've been on the, on the committee as an Alderman. And they run in between 75 and 85,000 miles. That's just mileage. But that don't say how long they've been sitting there idling. Because you can add another 50,000 or 60,000 miles for idling. So the squad cars should be replaced, two of them every year. And then they're also turned over to public works and they use them too, the old squad cars for a while, unless they've changed, but they've always used them. And the inspectors used to use them downstairs, but we bought cars for them now. So I would say, I would say we still should stay with two cars a year. And if one of the managers or somebody, like, somebody needs one that's, then replace it, like a detective or something like that. But as far as, the detectives just got two new cars anyway.
And, and we are. We're not, these, these two vehicles don't have anything to do with the police department.
Oh.
We're still replacing the squads. These are two, this is a new replacement vehicle for the public works director and a one-ton pickup truck. This is just, has nothing to do with police. This is just on the public works side.
Yeah. They should.
Are you, are you saying put the public works field goes back in?
It depends upon what they're buying. I don't know what they're going to buy. They're not, they're going to, not buy Ford Convicts, but they'll probably buy Fusions or something like that.
These two replacement vehicles, the first one being 210 is a 2001 Ford F350 pickup truck with a lift gate, plow, and strobe lights on. Basically, it's used in the street department to pull all of our trailers. It's a diesel pickup truck with roughly 50,000 miles on it. Traditionally, we replace all of our pickup trucks at 10 years. This one's at 10 years. It's had a fair amount of maintenance issues over the last year and a half, which is why we requested that it be replaced at 10 years. If we had no maintenance issues with it, we could have lasted another year or two with it. But again, at the cost being $45,000, basically, we deferred it to save that, a portion of that money. The second vehicle, vehicle 300, is actually a 2008 Ford Taurus. It's not much different than the police department does. We have a pool car at City Hall Vehicle 100, which is a 2000, or excuse me, yes, a 2001. It's due to be replaced. We always pull our pool cars out at 10 years. That gets replaced with another pool car. Traditionally, it's always come either from the public works director's car or it comes from either a sergeant's car, police department, something like that. We have no current vehicles rotating into that spot. So mine was the next logical choice besides the assistant city manager's car. He didn't want to replace his car. That's how that came up. So both these vehicles can be deferred at some point. The useful life of that pool car and that truck, the cost of maintaining it will outweigh keeping it versus getting a new one.
I still believe it should be changed. Should be changed.
Alderman Shockey, you had your hand up?
No, no, I'm going to skip this. I'm sorry.
Alderman Wesley.
The cost on these replacements of these, the upkeep, let's put it as the upkeep of these vehicles that you replace, do you have a dollar amount?
No.
75,000.
No, that's for replacement.
Oh, maintenance.
As a maintenance. Can we table this and come back to it later?
Basically, where do you want to talk about it?
Well, we don't know how much it costs to maintain those vehicles now of the replacement. I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything.
How far do you want us to go back for maintenance?
Go back the whole 10 years.
Complete vehicle history?
From the time that the car, the truck was bought until the time now.
Probably the last two years, don't you think?
No, no. Truck was bought 10 years ago. It's been maintained for 10 years. So you're going to go for the cost of the whole thing. And then that way he'll, he'll know how much it costs to run the truck and see how much it's, what to be replaced, especially the last three years of maintaining. Also the car that he's going to replace.
Right. Well, the car's going into the pool. Basically, your car would move into the pool car since there's no other, if I'm understanding right.
There's no other car replacing.
Your car would go into the pool car because there's no other car coming into that pool.
Right.
And that's why the other car.
It's exactly the way the police department does it. The chief's car, the deputy chief's car, once they drive them for two years, they get put in as sergeant's cars. Same, same philosophy. That's standard practice.
Right. So basically, we're getting rid of two cars that are 10, 10 years old. And, okay, but I could wait to see the number as well. Me personally, I've always said, why don't we, you know, push everything back one year? But, you know, I've heard that both, the, you know, the maintenance of it and whatnot. And I'll be honest with you, the company I work for, their trailers get replaced every five years, the boxes. So, but their trucks are always on the road. You don't hear them breaking down or whatnot. So, I mean, there's good and bad on both sides. Anything else on the subject?
But I just want you to know that all our vehicles is for everyone to know here, it comes out state purchasing. So wherever the state purchase price is, that's what we buy them from. We just don't go to Ford and buy their vehicle. It's whoever's got the state purchase. So I only did my debate because I just don't want to fall behind on equipment replacement.
Right. If we start deferring, we're going to be buying four cars or three cars next year. But I could wait for the number. So, and we'll get that number by next week or something, right? Okay. Anything else on this? Next, water and sewer.
The general sum, just the water and sewer fund summary starts on page 179 with a quick narrative. And then pages 180 and 181 is a summary of our revenues and our expenditures related to this particular enterprise fund. Most of the money coming in comes from the sale of water and sewer service fees with some miscellaneous revenues. And then on page 181, you see that we are proposing 3.6 million in public utilities, 2.2 million in wastewater, and 383,000 in maintenance. And we'll get to those tabs in just a second. This is just the broad overview of the fund itself.
I got a quick one on this one. Right on the sale of water, we're looking at increase in that, and the bottom line is I thought we're getting an increase from the county. And we were going to look and see what our increase was going to be. Because I know we were projected to have an increase. I think you said originally, the county was figured in at 6% or, and now it's 11% or 15%.
The, the water commission had originally told us 15%. And the last thing we got was that they were up to 21%. This number, the sale of water number, only incorporates the 15% in the rate structure that the council passed, was a year and a half ago. Does not include that extra 6% that the county is thinking to pass along to us. Because when we prepared the budget, there wasn't a clear consensus as if you wanted to pass that along or absorb it.
Okay, well.
But before we, if I may, real quick, we did however, build in the 21% increase into the expenditure side in, I believe it's the public utility side to account for the cost, the additional cost of the water. So we built in the expense because we were, wanted to be conservative and planned for that. But we didn't want to make, I didn't want to make any assumptions as to what you guys would do with the rate increase. So this only factors in the rate increase that we had already originally passed. If you were to pass along that extra, then that number would go up. If, if you want to absorb it, then the numbers are fine the way they are.
Well, the bottom line, for me personally, I'm not, not going to speak for everybody else. The 21%, I'm not, I don't recall what the number was between one and the other. But if our increase was say like 5 cents, whatever, and now the county's taking 2 cents of that, so we're only going to get a 3 cents increase. So this number, the sale of water, I think our, our side would be less. Am I, am I looking at this right or no? Unless, or are we just adding the, the counties plus, plus we're going to add our 5 cents? I don't, I don't really want to do both. I think I want to cut our cut down a little bit. I know we were trying to get this fund in a nice, solid, positive, which we've done this year, but, you know, how much can the people absorb? A loss this year? I thought it was going to be 200 to the positive.
That, that loss this year includes depreciation. We always budget for depreciation. And depreciation is not a cash expenditure. So if we were to, if you to factor this net of depreciation, it would be to the positive this year.
And where's that on here?
It's more of an accounting function. It's half in public utilities and half in wastewater depreciation costs are.
Because of the depreciation costs, we're showing a $300,000 loss.
Correct. Yeah. But on a cash basis, if we pull that depreciation out, it would be, it would be to the good.
About, I think it was supposed to work out to about 200,000.
Yeah, I think, I'd have to add them up as we go through, but I think it's between 100 and 150,000 between the good. Because part of it was that with all the foreclosures, the, the water revenue was a little lighter than we had anticipated due to foreclosures, people not using the water. And so that did hurt the, the revenue flow a little bit, revenue stream a little bit.
And where would that discussion happen for the, for the water?
The rates.
Right. Because that's May 1st, I believe, is when the next increase happens.
Well, the 15% is going to kick in May 1st, but the county hasn't decided what they want. This is sort of like the state in reverse. You know, we're all taking the, the, the worst-case scenario that Governor Quinn's budget's going to pass and we're going to see a 30% reduction in our state income tax. We're also taking the worst-case scenario that the county's going to bump our cost of buying water. And we've factored that in because we knew that, we saw that coming before.
At 15%.
Well, 15% that we knew of and then a potential additional 6%. I think the time to discuss whether you pass that on to the residents or not is when they, we see really what the county's going to do. I don't think you ought to have that.
So 6% is not done yet?
No. It's, oh, no, no, no. It's still out there floating.
Oh, I thought this, I thought it was 21% and that's what we're getting.
They haven't made that call yet.
So as of right now, we're still at 15%. So.
Right.
The mayor, Mayor Johnson.
Actually, that's not my understanding. I thought they already passed the 21%.
I haven't heard anything that extent.
We should look into that.
I think Mr. Wilson was at the meeting.
Yeah, the meeting that I was at, they did vote on the 21%, but my understanding of that particular rate-setting motion was that it could not exceed 21%. There was still some debate as to whether or not, what, if they were going to use that full 21% or something less than that after they figured out what they were going to do with their budget and the interim loans that they were going to get.
Because my understanding is they passed the 21. There were some members who wanted to increase it even further.
Correct.
And it was a split vote and it only passed by like one vote or something?
That is correct, yeah. It's passed by, by one vote between, I think it was 21% and, boy, like 28% or something like that.
So if we're operating at a $300,000 surplus, we didn't pick up the extra 6% in expenses, how could we be at the end of next year with an 80,000?
We did pick up the extra 6% on the expense side. We didn't pick it up on the revenue, on the revenue side. The, the difference to us in that 6%, if you average out the last few years, is about
So I'm kind of confused. Is there a 21% increase from the county or? Is, can we clear, we don't have to do, I mean, if we don't have the right answer right, or if we're not positive tonight, I mean, we can check into that.
Sure, we can check into it. But that's the assumption that we built the water purchase number on. The assumption that we built the water sale number on was the way the ordinance is currently written, which is 15%.
Mr. Alderman Wesley.
My question is, our increase is going in effect May 1st. Is there a way we could hold off on the 15% going into effect May 1st due to the fact we might want to revisit this? Because here's the thing, that's 36% water increase. You try and tell me.
No, 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 no.
The 21% plus 15.
No, 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 no. It's 15 plus 6 equals 21%. The 15% is going to kick in May 1st.
It's ours.
From the county.
From the county.
The county's talking about another 6% on top of that for a total of 21%.
And that's our increase, 17.
If, if they pass that, we're going to have to pay them, they're going to hit us, the city, with a 21% increase in the with a 21% increase in the cost of water. We've already built in a 15% increase in the sale of water, and then the decision for you all to make sometime down the line is, do you want to take that additional 6% that we're getting hit, hit on the purchase and pass it on to our customers, or do you want to eat it?
Okay, let's...
And, and that's where I said, well, if our increase was five cents, and that 6% was a two cents to the county, are we gonna raise another two cents to the residents, or are we just gonna stay with, and accept the three cents?
That's a policy call.
And, right, well, that's why I want to make, but me personally, I'd say, leave it there, don't add another two cents or whatever that, whatever that amount's gonna be.
That's essentially what the county has been, what the DuPage Water Commission has been doing the last few years, is that they've been absorbing the increases from the city of Chicago, and they haven't passed that on. Uh, they've been subsidizing it from their sales tax.
Mr. Wilson?
Just a quick follow-up to Alderman E. Wesley's question. Uh, the, interesting caveat to that is that it's, it's water used after May 1st, so the bills that go out that are due May 21st do not include that rate increase, so there is a little bit of time after May 1st to, to fix that up. Because it's water used as of May 1st or after.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Mayor Johnson?
Uh, how'd we go from an actual surplus of 1,164,000 down to the projected negative deficit of 300,000?
Capital spending.
Where did that expense come in?
The capital spending, the water CIP, the transfer to the capital, uh, project funds.
Anybody else? Basically, after the budget, we should know, like, first meeting in May, we'll know what the county's doing, hopefully.
Hopefully, we can, hopefully, we'll know by the time the budget's gonna be passed in late April. Uh, the plan right now is that if we can get the rest of this budget done next Thursday night, that'll give Brad enough time to publish it and po, and post it in the newspaper, and we come back for a special meeting on the 29th to wrap it all up and take the final vote. Hopefully, by then, we'll have a better idea of what the county's gonna do. Also, hopefully, we'll have an idea what the state's gonna do with, on what they've been doing.
Alderman Lewitin.
If this is an enterprise fund, how can you take the money out of it and transfer it to the capital improvement program? This money's supposed to stay there for the building of the new sewer and water plant.
There are two separate capital funds we have. One is the general capital fund that's funded by the city-only sales tax and the utility tax, and the other is a water sewer capital fund that's funded by, uh, a transfer from the water and sewer operating fund. Because they're all within the same environment, if you will, it's, it's perfectly legal to take money from the water sewer operating fund and move it over to the water sewer capital fund. It's not okay to take money from the water sewer operating fund and move it into the general capital fund. You have to keep those separate, and that's why we have two separate capital funds. You've got the general capital fund and the water sewer capital fund.
And what are we doing with this money, what are we buying? Money that's being transferred, what are you buying with it?
I would take it in the CIP, I guess, right?
Um, in fiscal year 11, we're doing $390,000 in water projects, 870,000 in wastewater projects, and 345,000 in plant maintenance, for a total of 1,606,000. Next year, that is 2012, we propose to spend almost 1,404,000. In 2013, 3.9 million. 2014, 2.1 million. And then 2015, 36 million, when we anticipate that the, uh, new sewer plant will kick in. So we're putting money aside to handle the repair of our infrastructure, and we're funding it from transfers from the sale of water and, uh, and sewer charges.
So where are you gonna get the money then to build the $30 million sewer plant?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to bond it.
I thought you were gonna save the money from here, from the money from the sale of the water was going to accumulate.
Well, not to the extent of 36 million, no.
No, but, uh, but, but to several million, now you're taking it away? Because eventually, if you have the bonds, then you have to raise the water, cost of the water.
That's correct.
All you're doing is, is pushing the buck down the road.
I wouldn't call that, I wouldn't describe it as that. This, the city council approved this capital improvement program, not only last year, but this year. And knowing, knowing full well, or should have known full well, that there were these water and sewer projects coming down the line that we've planned for over a five-year period. We went over this several months ago, and it was adopted by the council.
All I can say is, five years from today, or 10 years from today, people are gonna pay triple for their water because we're not putting the money aside for the plant. It shouldn't be hogged to some other project, it should be accumulated. So you get as much as you can for, for a major project.
I, I guess, I guess what we need to go do is go back at another meeting and go back over the CIP again, and review and refresh everybody's memories in terms of what these projects are. Uh, it's painting of reservoir tanks every year. It's, uh, an improvement to one of our wells, it's cleaning and painting of a tower. It's the installation of a new booster station, two new booster stations, three new booster stations, uh, a water modeling study, a water main replacement on Addison Road that's falling apart, water main replacement on Hemlock Avenue. These are all infrastructure projects related to the existing, uh, infrastructure. Now, if we don't do those, and you let the infrastructure in the ground fall apart, perhaps you can start stockpiling money up for that sewer treatment plant down the line. But meanwhile, your infrastructure and, in the ground right now that we've already identified as needing replacement doesn't get replaced. So I guess you can't have it both ways. You can't continue to improve and maintain the infrastructure in the ground and save up money for, uh, a new sewer plant. You can't do both. It's one or the other.
Well, then we should be more frugal with the CIP program.
Anybody else? Mayor Johnson?
Just quickly, the plan we approved a week or two ago, the 2.5B is 13 million on the sewer plant, so hopefully we're not gonna spend the 36. What was the one-time contribution from property owners, 486,000 dollars?
That was four, um, boy, maybe John can help me out here. Uh, it was in the special service area, was it the Riker lift station? Or was there, it was something that was built in the last two years. It was, it was one of the service areas, it was either a booster station or a lift station that was done up in one of the special service areas, so it was a Dave, uh, it was a Dave project.
Property owner gave us 500,000?
Well, it, it wasn't that the property owner gave us the money, but the project was done with special service area money that is paid for via the property tax levy on the property owners in that service area. So since it's money that is being paid, the bonds are being paid for by the property owners in the service area, from an accounting standpoint, it was technically a contribution from property owners, since they're the ones paying off the bonds.
And it was a one-time?
Correct, yeah, it was built for with special service area money as part of the road reconstruction and some of the other infrastructure needs in that area. So, it wasn't, somebody wrote us a check, it was a different accounting function.
Somebody else?
It was the Clif, the Clufsted lift station that was done over the last couple of years.
All right, next, Public Utilities Division.
Page 182 is the organizational structure. 183 and 184 is the narrative. 185 is the target level at 3.6 million dollars. And 186 and 187 are the line items for this cost center.
I got one on this one. On, uh, page 187, new water meters and replacement program. Eighty, 80,000. How many meters are we buying for 80,000? For the whole city?
No, but close to probably a full ward. Um, the Utilities Division has been very vehement in looking at water meter and water accountability. Um, I, they were taxed about a year and a half ago in starting this project, and they have been very diligent in finishing up the entire industrial park with almost excellent accountability. All the buildings have new meters in there. Traditionally, most residential meters last in the neighborhood of 15 years. Commercial meters, larger meters in the industry are either rebuilt or replaced, depending on the cost of the meter, every 10 years. So we're to the point now where we are, um, changing over, we've got roughly, and Brad might have to, uh, um, interject on this, three different meter reading softwares. In part of these meter changeouts, we're converting over to one meter reading system, both to improve productivity on staff's end, where we're not, um, have to have three different devices to read meters, or better yet, having to walk certain routes because the meters are not capable of being read, driven down the street. So, um, as part of this, this, these meters will actually pay for themselves, both on, on the accountability end and in the savings as far as having one meter system, one set of parts to have, et cetera.
Anything else on this? Alderman Lewitin?
Are we now discussing page 186?
Yes.
My little pet project here, um, number 420333, Laboratory Services. John, on the usages and on the cuts, I want to make sure that there is no change in opinion that we will be doing the approximate $800 cost of the asbestos testing in the pipes.
Yes, that money is factored into, into that laboratory services amount. So we have that, as well as our stage-two disinfectant and all the other well testing that we have to do for compliance for our EPA potable water. So yes, that is still factored in there, and that, that number stays the same. Laboratory services, for the most part, are pretty much flat every year.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley?
Do we do the same area every time, or do we switch all over for that test? The last test was the same area.
I would have to confer with our water system operator to find out. I believe we do it in sections of the city that have that questionable, um, AC transite water main pipe. That's the question that Alderman Lewitin was directing to. So there's only a few areas we can truly test. Um, we can test anywhere to get a baseline, but in order to test for the, um, parts per million, or, excuse me, fibers, uh, fibers per million? Fibers for a million, per million, try? Fibers per million, we only have a few sites that we can physically test to get that. We know where our baseline water comes in, where it comes in from DWC, but as far as testing the water flowing through there, we only have a few spots that we can actually test.
Well, we tested the same location twice now, so you're moving to a different location, I hope. Because the past two reports that we got is the same location.
I could be incorrect, but I thought I remember seeing four different test sites on each of those locations. We could be testing the same four sites each year. Again, um, you know, we can differ our, um, our practices as far as testing goes.
Anything else on that? Next, Wastewater Division.
Bear with us, we're getting close. Page 188's the org chart for the wastewater division. 189's the accomplishments and objectives. Page 190 is the, uh, target level. There's one additional request, which I did not recommend, and that was $20,000 for two closed-circuit TVs for the plants. And then page 192 and 193 are the line items.
I got a question on that, uh, I think this, the TVs for the plants, I think I asked this last year. Isn't there some kind of grant or something, I mean, water treatment plants with Homeland Security or anything? For security reasons or anything that we might be able to tap into?
I don't know. I did not look into it, since it's a wastewater treatment plant, meaning that's, um, discharging effluent. It's not a potable drinking water production plant, drawing water could be a little different. Um, I can contact the IEPA and find out if there is anything in relationship to that. I know Brad's, Brad, uh, the wastewater supervisor, um, is very diligent in looking at that. He's the one that actually brought this to my attention. So, um, I, I, I would naturally assume he would have already looked into that, but again, we can look at it again, but we did feel warranted enough to put it in here a second year in a row.
Anything, Alderman Wesley?
Question is, John, the reason why we put, the right, reason why we looked on that, did we or did we not have someone get into the treatment plant, or someone accidentally shut off a valve that could cause trouble in our town? Don't know if it was an employee or who it was, but I think that's the only reason why this was put in.
The only incident I can recall of late was there was, um, at our north wastewater facility, an issue with a pump being left off in the off position. We never attributed that to somebody physically coming in, janitor, staff member, et cetera, inadvertently shutting something off. We did get a, um, a alarm level on one of them after hours on a switch that was normally in the on position, ready, in the hand mode, ready to accept a level alert and click on it, did not. We never attributed that to one reason or another.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, and the last one for the evening, Maintenance Division.
Page 194, the narrative, as well as page 195. Page 196 is the target level, which is down significantly, mostly because of the elimination of the, uh, plant maintenance supervisor that you talked about a number of months ago. And then page 197 are the line items.
Alderman Wesley?